Good evening. I'll call the meeting to order at this time. If you will, please rise for the invocation and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance. And I will call on Dr. David Barber to please lead us in the invocation, please.
Dear Lord, I thank for this opportunity we have that we can come as a town and we can do the business of the town for the people of the town. I pray, Lord, that the decisions we make will be decisions that are fair and honest, and, Lord, that will meet the needs of the people of our community. I pray, Lord, that for those who present, that they present straightforward so that we can understand, that we can then be able to apply based upon our knowledge. Again, we thank you, Lord, for all that we do. We thank you for this community. What a great community we live in, and what a blessed community. And we thank you, Lord, for the things you do for our community. Again, we thank you for all you do, in the mighty name of Jesus we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Gentlemen, so you have the agenda. There are a few known changes to the agenda. One is adding to a presentation, a special presentation to our town clerk. And then we also have one for another proclamation declaring June the 2nd, 2023, as National Gun Violence Awareness Day, the town of Smithfield. There are some consent agenda items, the special event for the Neuse River Amphitheater Grand Opening, as well as appointments to the Downtown Smithfield Development Corporation Board of Directors. Both of those will be added to the consent agenda. I think you all have this information already at your table. Are there any other additions to the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, my question is, so the item, this is item, the item four that's on here is added, and there's another one added? So now is that going to be three? That should be four, then they have another one that's five, right?
I'm sorry. Say that one more time.
You didn't name this presentation, I don't think, the declaring June National Gun Violence Awareness Day?
I did.
You did?
Yes, sir.
I missed that one. So number, which one, you said you added one for her?
Added presentation.
That's number five?
Yeah.
That would be number five, right?
Um.
Okay.
It would be number five, yes.
Okay. I'd like to add number six as a Skills USA presentation.
Okay. All right. And then also, we do have, we need to remove from the agenda a business item for the consideration and request for approval to enter into an agreement with Rivers and Ravelinell, amount of $52,500. We need to remove that at this time from the business item. And I believe that is it. Those are all the known changes. And so we have the addition of the presentation from Mr. Barber. Any other additions or corrections to the agenda? Not hearing any, I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So move, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So gentlemen, I'm gonna, bit of mayor's privilege, I'm gonna move the presentation from the clerk to the first presentation, if that's okay with you?
Yes.
I think she's number one here, so I'm gonna move that to the first presentation. Something I can do, right?
Do we have to?
Very little I can do.
Yes, ma'am, we do. I know you don't like the recognition, but it is my privilege and my honor, and I think I can speak on behalf of the entire council, how much this lady sitting up here at the end of the table means to all of us, not only to the council, but to all of the citizens of North Carolina, and especially Smithfield. She's recognized as being a leader in her field. She's recognized from all the clerks around the state of North Carolina and nationally. And we are so fortunate to have Shannon as part of our team. It's a thankless job, right? But she does so much behind the scenes to keep all of us in line and especially me. I can't speak for them, but especially me, and keep me where I'm supposed to be, which is difficult task. But sending the reminders and making sure that all the Ts are crossed and the Is are dotted, because keeping the minutes and keeping the records for the town of Smithfield is a pretty important task, right? And we've seen that as we've gone back and tried to research things from many, many years ago, and having those accurate, detailed records means so much when you're trying to figure something out 40 years later, or 50 years later, or 100 years later. Hopefully, you still won't be doing this in 100 years, but hopefully whoever is up here will have the same caliber of clerk as we have today. So if you will, please bear with me. I apologize for my voice, so I'll try to get through this. So Town of Smithfield Proclamation for Professional Municipal Clerk's Week, May the 2nd, 2023. Whereas in 1984 and 1994, Presidents Ronald Reagan and Bill Clinton respectively signed proclamation officially declaring Professional Municipal Clerk's Week the first full week of May. And whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk, a time honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world. And whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants. And whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing body, and agencies of government at multiple levels. And whereas professional municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality rendering equal service to all. Whereas the professional municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community. Whereas professional municipal clerks continuously strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of the professional municipal clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, county, and international professional organizations. Whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of the professional municipal clerk. Be it resolved that I, Andy Moore, Mayor of the town of Smithfield, along with the Smithfield Town Council, do hereby proclaim the week of April 30th through May the 6th, 2023, to be Professional Municipal Clerk's Week, and further extend appreciation to our professional municipal clerk, Shannon Parrish, for the vital services she performs and exemplary dedication to the Smithfield community. Thank you very, very much. And one more thing, is this on? And then one more thing. I know I bring stuff in, and you can't eat a lot of the stuff that I bring in, but here is just a little something from us. It's a sugar-free vanilla cheesecake from Bernie's. So hopefully you will be able to enjoy that as well. Okay? Definitely.
Thank you. Thank you so much, all of you.
Thank you, gentlemen, for allowing me that privilege. And Shannon, thank you again for all that you do. All right, so we'll move on now to our proclamation for Fire Captain Bentley Powell. Bentley, if you'll come up, and Fire Chief, and anyone else that you would like to come, please come forward.
Another privilege of mine, sir. Hate to see you go, but it is also a privilege to present you with this proclamation for your dedicated service to the town of Smithfield with over 20 years of service to the town of Smithfield, and not only to the town of Smithfield, but to the entire county, right? So not only a full-time member of the Smithfield Fire Department, but also a member and Fire Chief, right, of the Wilsons Mills Fire Department. So pretty active lifestyle, so thank you also for sharing your family and your dedication to protect the lives of so many throughout Johnston County. So Chief, if you will, bear with me. I'll read this proclamation in honor of Fire Captain Arthur Bentley Powell's 20-plus years of dedicated service to the town of Smithfield. Whereas Arthur Bentley Powell has been a dedicated employee of the town of Smithfield for more than 20 years. And whereas Arthur Bentley Powell retired on May 1, 2023, and is being honored for his years of service as a member of the Smithfield Fire Department. And whereas throughout his professional career, Arthur Bentley Powell helped advance the fire department by serving in a variety of roles, including firefighter, engineer, and ultimately as a captain. So you truly came up through the ranks, sir. So congratulations on that. It's a testament to so many. Whereas through his dedication and service to the residents of the town of Smithfield and Johnston County, Arthur Bentley Powell directly contributed to creating a safer and more resilient community. And whereas Arthur Bentley Powell has earned and deserves this public recognition for his many years of service and commitment to the town of Smithfield. Now therefore, I, Andy Moore, of the town of Smithfield, along with the members of the town council, express our sincere appreciation to Arthur Bentley Powell for his distinguished service to the town of Smithfield, and urge our citizens to join us as we extend our sincere appreciation for his work and wish him well in his future endeavors. Thank you very much, sir, and again, congratulations.
On behalf of Town of Smithfield, we'd like to present you this in small token our appreciation of if you enjoy it, and then if you enjoy your retirement, sir. Thank you very much. Is that your retirement?
Good luck. You're lucky, man. Well deserved.
Appreciate you, sir. Thank you for being there. Appreciate you. Take care. Yes, sir.
Now we'll move on to our next presentation, which is the 2022 Police Department Officer of the Year Award. This time I'll ask interim Chief Grady and Officer Boyce if you'll come forward, please, and anyone else that you would like to come with you. Chief, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, sir. Tonight, we'd like to congratulate one of our officers for the nomination of Officer of the Year for 2022. The way this occurs is during the year, officers that show a lot of enthusiasm for working, they do a great job for the agency, they're always willing to come in and work extra when need be, they show a lot of support to the agency. They're voted on by their peers, other officers, and the civilian staff. Once all those votes are tallied up, the supervisors also get to have a vote in the matter as well. And at the end of it, we pick the top three candidates for Officer of the Year, and this year happened to be Officer Jonathan Boyce. He's been with the agency for two and a half years, been doing a great job here at the agency, and at this time I'd like to present him with Officer of the Year Award for 2022. So if we could, just please congratulate him on this award.
Okay. Moving on to our next presentation, Ministering of the Oval Office to new Police Officer James Davis. If you will, please come forward, and anyone else if you would like to come forward. You gonna video this? All right. All right. If you will, please repeat after me. I, James Davis, the undersigned, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, that I will faithfully and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina, and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, that I will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, that I will be alert and vigilant to enforce the criminal laws of this state, that I will not be influenced in any manner on account of personal bias or prejudice, and that I will faithfully and impartially execute the duties of my office as a law enforcement officer, according to the best of my skill, abilities, and judgment. So help me God. Congratulations, sir. Thank you very much. Be safe.
It is my, we, I am actually representing, I have multiple hats, and this hat tonight, I'm not only a town councilman for Smithfield, which I'm honored to be, but I'm also on the executive board of Skills USA North Carolina. I don't know if all of you know what Skills USA North Carolina is, but Skills USA is our student organization that helps our young people in schools, those who are, that are firefighters, EMT, law enforcement, carpentry, mason, electrical trades, computer engineering, digital media, all of that in the schools, gives them an opportunity to be leaders and opportunities to shine. We have an annual competition that we do in Greensboro every year. We have 2,380 students competing this year in Skills USA, and along with that, we have to have people who are willing to give their time and energy from that field to do that work for us, to help line it. We don't have teachers judging, we have teachers leading, we have people from industry, because our job is to make sure that we have people fully qualified for the workforce. So that's what type we do. Well, we were fortunate enough this year to ask Chief Brown if he would be willing to serve. Last year, he helped as a, he didn't know he was getting suckered into it, but last year, he helped as a, as one of the judges. This year, we asked him to be the chairperson, and we wanted to, Skills USA wanted to honor him with a plaque for his dedicated work, and it says, Skills USA North Carolina, presented to Chief Michael Brown, Smithfield Fire Department, in appreciation for your dedication to the Skills USA Firefighter Competition as Contest Chairperson, Skills USA State Conference, April 2023. We appreciate you very much, sir. Very hard work. You just don't know the monumental task that was before him, but he handled it very well. So I thank you, sir, from part of, I thank you, Smithfield Town Council, I thank you for your dedication to helping make our next generation of firefighters what they need to be, and sharing that ability with everybody across the state through Skills USA.
All right, so we have one more presentation this evening, so a lot on the list this evening, but it's a great thing to be recognizing so many individuals, so many groups, and so forth. So this is a proclamation declaring June the 2nd, 2023, to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day in the town of Smithfield. Excuse me. Whereas every day, more than 120 Americans are killed by gun violence, and more than 200 are shot and wounded, with an average of more than 17,000 gun homicides every year. And whereas, according to current statistics of everystat.org, North Carolina has 1,350 gun deaths every year, with a rate of 13 deaths per 100,000 people, a crisis that costs the state $19.5 billion each year. North Carolina has the 24th highest rate of gun deaths in the United States. And whereas, local governments spend a combined average of nearly $35 million each day to deal with the aftermath of gun violence across America. And whereas, communities across the nation, including Smithfield, are working to end the senseless violence with evidence-based solutions. And whereas, protecting public safety in the communities they serve is a town council's highest responsibility. And whereas, federal and state laws support the Second Amendment rights of law-abiding citizens while keeping guns out of the hands of those convicted of violent felonies. And whereas, by wearing orange on June the 2nd, 2023, Americans will raise awareness about gun violence and honor the lives of gun-violent victims and survivors. And whereas, we renew our commitment to reduce gun violence and pledge to do all we can to encourage responsible gun ownership to help keep our families and communities safe. Now therefore, I, Andy Moore, Mayor of the town of Smithfield, declare the first day in June, June the 2nd, 2023, to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day, and I encourage all citizens to support their local communities' efforts to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence and to honor and value human lives. Thank you very much. We'll move on now to our public hearings. Excuse me. Our first public hearing is, this is not a quasi-judicial hearing, so there's no need for anyone to be sworn in on this matter. It is ZA-23-03. It's an amendment from the town of Smithfield, and the applicant is requesting an amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance, Article 10, Part 1, Section 10.95, Airport Height Hazard Overlay, to help ensure safe movement of aircraft near the Johnston County Airport. This time I will entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
I make a motion to open the public hearing. Second.
Motion and a second. Any opposed? Motion, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Stephen, I will turn it over to you, sir.
All right. Thank you, Mayor and Council. So this is a staff-driven ordinance amendment. I attended a steering committee, a stakeholder committee, sorry, at the airport for their master plan. And through that process, they, you know, presented a revised, updated model airport ordinance that they requested that all the towns adopt. And so this ordinance tonight is based on their template. It's not, it's really not much of a change, it's just clearer language. It actually has the reference to the map, which is in my office, for anybody who needs it. The old ordinance didn't make that connection, and there's updated terms, and it's just a clearer ordinance. Just providing a clear description and guidance on the various airport zones, there's multiple zones, and what it is, it's a zone, not necessarily horizontally, but it's also vertically. Or actually, as you get away from the airport, the height diminishes. So it's really regulating height near the airport. So staff finds this ordinance consistent with the Comprehensive Growth Management Plan and other adopted plans, and it's reasonable in the public interest, and with that, staff is recommending approval. And there's a recommended motion. Are there any questions?
Any questions for Stephen at this time? Is anyone in the audience have any questions or comments? Not seeing any? I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I move a closed public hearing.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve zoning text amendment ZA-23-03, amending Article 10, Section 10.95, and associated definitions in Appendix A, finding the amendment consistent with the town of Smithfield Comprehensive Growth Management Plan and other adopted plans, and that the amendment is reasonable and in the public interest.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, we will now move on to our next public hearing. Again, this is not a quasi-judicial hearing, so no need for anyone to be sworn in on this one either. It is ZA-23-04, Town of Smithfield is also requesting this. The applicant is requesting amendment to the Town of Smithfield Unified Development Ordinance's Article 6, Section 6.6, Table of Permitted Uses and Activities that will remove government offices as a permitted use in the light industrial and heavy industrial zoning districts. This time I'll entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
I move we open the public hearing.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stephen?
Sure. So this is a request in review of the ordinance. We found government. Government. Sure. So this is a request in review of the ordinance. We found government, government offices are, are within the light and heavy industrial district as permitted uses currently. Given the importance of industrial land to economic development and the growth of the town, we felt that was not a, really a good use of our industrial land, especially since we've put so much effort into the development of those recently. So with that, staff is recommending removing the P's in the table, the permitted use from the table. And staff feels this is consistent with the Comprehensive Growth Management Plan and other adopted plans, and it's reasonable and in the public interest. Got a recommendation, the planning board recommended approval, and I've got a recommended motion. Are there any questions?
Any questions for the council?
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
Do you have a written definition of what a government, what a government office is? Is there a written, not an opinion, a written definition of what a government office is? Because that's the key, right? What is a, what is the actual written definition of a government office?
I, I can't answer that because I don't recall. I'd have to check the UDO. But...
Do we not have such a thing if we're going to limit?
Well, we, I think, I think office, the office use is defined, and we know who the governments are. So I, I think as a staff, whether it's in there or not, I think staff, staff interpretation would, would know. And if there was a disagreement, it would be appealed to the Board of Adjustments.
Could we add a definition?
We could add a definition if there is, if there is not one.
Find what it is?
Yes, if there is.
But there's not any, any, I don't need to have debate over it, just what it is, right?
Fair. If that's something the council would like to see, I will definitely find a definition and add it if we don't have one.
Are there currently any governmental offices in light or heavy industrial?
I'm not aware of any.
Okay.
Thank you.
Then the question would be is, if there are that we're not aware of, and there happen to be, would they be able to remain since they're already there? So like grandfathered in until they?
They would be, they would be grandfathered in if there were government offices.
So it wouldn't be kicking out anybody making the change? Okay.
So the, as far as your question, Dr. Barber, I mean, is that something, as far as the definition, we could go on and vote on this tonight, and then you can bring that back to us? Or how do you want to handle that?
I'm perfectly acceptable with accepting them creating the definition.
Okay.
As long as there is a definition. That's all I'm saying. I think it was too much ambiguity there. I'd just rather have something in writing, so people say, what do you mean?
Yep.
Well, it's defined. That's all I'm...
No, and I agree. I don't disagree with you.
That's all I'm saying. I trust that they can do it. I just need to, that's why I said we make sure we add that, that they need to add a definition for it.
Yeah, there may be one. I'm not certain. So we'll, we'll bring forward one if there's not one.
But I don't, I don't think we need to have approval of it, per se. It's just, they need to have one. I don't feel the need to. Do you really? I mean, I don't think there's any need for them to have to bring it back to action.
No, no, no. That's fine. I just wanted to be clear on what your ask was.
Well, any new, any new definition would come before the council.
It would come before anyway.
Adding to the UDO.
And we could go ahead and at least approve this. Any other questions for staff at this time? Okay. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak on this matter, please come forward at this time. Not seeing anyone. If there are no further questions, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I move, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve the zoning text amendment ZA 23-04, amending Article 6, Section 6.6, striking the government offices as permitted use in the light industrial and heavy industrial zoning districts, finding the amendment consistent with the town of Smithfield Comprehensive Growth Management Plan and other adopted plans, and that the amendment is reasonable and in the public interest, with a definition to be added for what a government office is.
Okay. Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. Moving on to our next public hearing, also by the town of Smithfield. Again, this is not a quasi-judicial, so no need for anyone to be sworn in. This is ZA-23-05. The applicant is requesting amendment, it's town of Smithfield Unified Development Ordinance's Article 10, Section 10.1, that will restrict the severe pruning of regulated landscaping. This time, I'll entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
I move we open the public hearing.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any opposed?
All right.
Uh, sorry. I'm way ahead of myself. All in favor of the motion? All right. Any opposed? All right. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Stephen, I'll turn it over to you.
All right. This is being requested by staff and the planning board. Planning board reviewed this amendment and recommended approval. So what it is, it's amendment to Article 10, Section 10.11, which is maintenance, to prohibit severe pruning of required landscape trees. The planning board does quarterly review of ordinances, and we discuss various topics, and this came up. You've probably noticed throughout town that there's been a lot of, of heavy pruning of required trees in the street boulevards, particularly crepe myrtles, but also now we're seeing overstory trees being cut down with, you know, big blunt stubs, stumps. And that, that's where this came forward, because development is, has to install required trees and shrubs, including street yards. And they're, they're required to plant overstories and canopy trees, or understory and canopy trees and shrubs. And what's happened lately is, and I got some pictures, is this year in particular, I don't know what it is, but there are, you know, trees are getting cut down even shorter than a lot of the shrubs that are adjacent to them. And it's, it's, it's not necessarily good for the trees or very aesthetic. And it's also contrary to the purpose of the landscape ordinance. And, and developments are intended to, or are required to maintain the landscaping that they install, the required landscaping through the life of the project. So we believe that this is not in keeping with the intent of the ordinance. So there's just an example here, definition of topping versus pilarding. There is a tradition of pilarding, which is a technique, kind of an artistic technique to shape trees. It came out of France many, many years ago. Example of a pilarded tree on the left, sort of ornamental and looking, you know, looks interesting. And on the right is a topped crepe myrtle, which is pretty much what we're getting throughout town, really kind of fattened trunks that are just cut off wholesale. Two techniques are similar. Pilarding is considered an acceptable form of pruning. It does not damage the trees if it's done properly, mostly done by a skilled arborist. For the most part, what's happening in the town is, is not that. Here's some examples. Verizon, that's a, an overstory tree on the left that was cut. You can see the new growth kind of shooting out, out of the cut stems. Next to it, by the red Dodge, I think it's Dodge, or orange Dodge, that's a canopy tree that's been chopped. And KS Bank, there are some trees that are cut short. You can't even tell they're trees, especially from a distance. More trees on the right there. Not sure where that, that's in front of Bright, Bright Leaf, at the Enterprise, by the Enterprise. CC's Pizza, tree in front of the store. King Jones, you can't find the trees in the picture. And this is the latest, the Exxon on the West Side, cut short. So as I kind of described, you know, they're required to plant two, two to, sorry, 12 to 14-foot canopy trees, or under, sorry, trees that are eight to 10 feet tall. And most of these are, are less than even that after they've been topped. Staff believes that this amendment is consistent with the Comprehensive Growth Plan adopted plans, and it's reasonable in public interest. And staff and the planning board are recommending approval, and I have a recommended motion. And are there any questions?
Any questions for Stephen?
Mr. Mayor, Stephen, is this going to apply to residential and commercial, or is this more commercial?
It's commercial.
Just commercial.
Mayor, I have a question. Mr. Wainsmann, I understand the point of this. My question is, how is this going to be enforced, and what's it going to do to make it compliant? Once you've cut the tree, it's cut.
Well, if, if someone's in violation, they would be required to maintain their required trees. And right now, if, if a tree dies, they got to replace it. It would be the same idea. They'd be required to replace trees that are heavily damaged. My intent is to go around and, and let business owners know that this ordinance is in place, to the best of my knowledge, but it may not be possible. We have a lot of out-of-town companies that hire landscape companies, and town will, staff will do their best to educate any companies that we see operating in the area. But obviously, it's going to be a difficult transition. Thank you.
Can I ask a question? First, what is it meant by the life of the project? You said the life of the project.
The life of the project. So, for instance, the Dollar Tree, or sorry, the Rite Aid, which is, we have a zoning permit to become a, a Dollar Tree. It's still a project. It was Rite Aid. The building is still there. The landscaping is still there. The new zoning permit came in. They're going to upgrade the landscape. They're going to replace the dead trees. They're pruning stuff that was overgrown. But it's still a project, and they're maintaining that landscape. And if they so choose, they could take it all out and redo the landscaping with a new plan, and that's the project.
So the landscaping plan is the project?
Well, it's approved with the project. So they can, they can refresh that landscape plan with the project. But the landscaping, the approved landscape plan that we have that is adopted by staff, stamped approved, that is a landscape plan that goes with the project. And so that is required to, to be maintained for the life of the project. And we all know landscape trees, they die, some will get overgrown, styles and trends change, businesses have different interests over time, so they may be wanting to make changes. Staff is willing to allow. Truist recently felt their, their landscaping was too mature and was hiding their building. We worked with the landscaper to, you know, keep some of the existing trees, introduce some new smaller ones that, that meet the current code. The current code is not as onerous as the old code. The old code was much more aggressive with trees and shrubs. So we work with, with landscapers, and, and you can do a lot with a landscape plan to not block buildings. I, it's my belief that, you know, a good landscape plan, you can actually accentuate a building and keep the views, and, and that is something that we need to educate project developers on. They don't just need to put a tree every 50 feet like the ordinance implies. They can actually space them and cluster them and make it look nice for the project. So it is going to be difficult in the beginning because, you know, people have overgrown landscapes, and their, their reaction is just to cut it all down.
So then, I'm assuming they don't want the trees to die, though, right? I mean, they don't want them to die, because dying, they got to replace them. So, I mean, they know that they, if they die, they got to replace them. So then my question is, so then what is the purpose for them cutting them? I mean, are they, I'm assuming that they, they think they can live with the cut they cut, or they wouldn't cut them up like that? Because if they die, they got to be replaced. I mean, is that right? I mean, I mean, is it, does it, does it really, does it permanently damage the tree? Is it just cutting back for the, because this got growed out of, you know, sometimes, sometimes you got to take bushes and cut them all the way back, because they just, just they suffocate themselves out. So I'm just saying, I mean, what is the, you know, do you know what the, what's the, the, what do you, what is the official reason for them doing that? Not just because they want to. I mean, obviously, they don't want a tree to die.
I, I don't, I can't say that they're thinking it's going to die. I think their intent is just to cut it back. A lot of plants can cut back. They'll last a long time. A lot of those canopy trees that cut back, they're still alive, but some of them are looking pretty sick as well. So you're just basically continuing to degrade the tree. At some point, it will die. You're probably speeding up that process if it's not, if the pruning is not done well. Do, do property owners know that, or really think about it, or really care? I can't say.
How long does it take for that tree to recover? I mean, that's, I mean, really, Mark may know better than others.
It depends on the species. I mean, crepe myrtles, you can, you can be pretty tough on them, and they, they'll live. They don't look as good, but they come back and they, they grow. They just look different. The canopy trees really will suffer. Those big old wounds at the, at the blunt ends of the stumps are really inviting insects and other problems, rot. So it, it kind of depends on the plant and the timing. It varies. Motivations, I can't say.
Stephen, some of the trees around town are the old Bradford pears that were planted many years ago, some of which are tremendously overgrown. At this point, there's really no other way to, to get those back in control without an excessive cutting. Is that correct?
Yeah. I mean, I actually got a question of that, about that today from, from somebody. You know, they're actually considered nuisance trees now in North Carolina. They're trying to eradicate them because they've spread everywhere. But yes, they break apart when they get old. There really are trees that should be cut down and replaced. Thank you.
Then I have a question. The, the trees that are, I'm assuming the trees that line, like Second Street, that are destroyed at the top because of power, like they cut them out. They look horrible, right? I mean, they do. They just, there's no top in them. They just...
And that was, you know, we, we had allowed for public safety. I mean, there's power lines under those trees, I believe.
There are.
And for public safety, I mean, you got to do what you got to do. But yes, they do look terrible.
I mean, the, the thing is, I'm a, if I'm a, I'm a, I'm a, a, a business owner, and, you know, people start complaining about my trees, I say, go look at them trees. You want to get something done, you fix your own trees. I'm just saying, you know, who are we picking on here? I mean, I understand what you're saying, but, I mean, I think we need to, we need to have a plan for fixing those things, too. They look horrible. And here we are, picking on business owners, and we not, we're saying, do as I say, not as I do.
Well, if, if a business owner had a tree under a power line, we'd allow it to be trimmed as well. I mean, it's the same standard. We would allow it. But we don't, we don't, we're not going to regulate residential use. It's really, we don't, it's, it's the commercial trees that...
Well, they're our trees, or they're residential trees? Are they owned by the town, or they're owned by the?
Oh, I believe they're in the right of way, so they'd be owned by the town.
They're our trees.
I believe so.
Is that right?
That's correct. And there's been discussion about those trees specifically over the years. Parents' commissions looked at them, and there's been plans to replace them. Culturally, the community at large really likes those trees. They've been there a long time, and they're not in any violation of our, of our code, either this new code or the existing code. So when, you know, I don't think it's fair to say that, you know, we got to take care of our own trees. Well, we are. They're not in violation. They may be old, and they may, you know, culturally, the community may decide that, yeah, we should take them out and we'll replace them. But there, there is a lot of history with those trees, and they're not, they're not in any violation now.
But neither are the elements until we pass this law.
Well, but why, why have a landscape ordinance that requires large trees if you don't want to keep the large trees?
I understand, but I'm just simply, and your argument is that they're not in violation, but neither are the, the existing trees, what they're doing to the trees today are not in violation either, until we pass this ordinance.
Not legal violation. I think the intent of the tree landscape ordinance is not to cut them down to look like a bush.
Well, I understand that.
But I think the, Councilman Barber's point, I mean, I agree, but that's probably a discussion we need to have during budget. I mean, that's, that's a pretty big undertaking.
Yeah. It's a big undertaking. And I mean, there, I know you mentioned one certain area, but there, I'd, I'd be careful, because, I mean, they may be in the right of way, but that doesn't make them our trees. Right? We don't know. I mean, I guess we could assume they're ours, but who knows when those were planted? Who knows when, when, those are pretty old trees. Who knows when they were planted? Who knows when the road was put in? Who owned that property at the time? So I'd be, I'd be hesitant to say that those are town trees. They may be, but I, I can't sit here and, and say that either. But certainly understand what you're saying, as far as what the utilities companies do to, to cut for the, the power lines. It does appear that it's pretty excessive. The, the trees do grow back and, and mature. I mean, it's been, ever since I've lived here, it's been that way. And I'm going on 52 years old. So those trees have, have been there. So, but certainly understand exactly what you're saying, and don't disagree with that at all. But I think it's something that we could take up and get, maybe get a plan together for such, such like that, because... for such like that because.
I'd be interested to see what the Parents Commission's ideas are.
Yeah.
You know, see what their thoughts are on that.
Yeah, absolutely. Agreed, 100%. Any other comments, questions? If not, is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak on this matter? If you will, please come forward. State your name and address for the record, please.
Lanny Thomas, Swift Creek Nursery. I'm a horticulturist, graduate of NC State University. We on purpose select cultivars of crepe myrtles that have good structure and good color of bark, good form. We sell varieties that grow anywhere from 10 to 30 feet tall, and a crepe myrtle should never be topped unless it's in a power line. And if you top them, you lose 50% of your bloom for the following bloom season. So, you're, it just doesn't work out.
How about pollarding? Can you pollard them like this picture has or not?
No. Nope. Crepe myrtles were bred to be upright and have pretty trunks, pretty salmon bark, and they just need to grow that way. And there's different cultivars that grow different heights. So, very important. And we feel like it's so important. In our office, we actually have pictures. It's called crepe murder. And we hand out brochures to all the uneducated landscapers that buy from us. So, I would encourage you to do whatever y'all can to keep crepe myrtles from being topped.
Thank you, Mr. Clifton. Anyone else wishing to speak on this matter will please come forward.
Jesus Christ.
If you will, please state your name and address for the record, please.
Diane Temple. Eva Baker. Her husband, I think, was Mayor Kenneth Baker. But she told me sometime this past year, she's at the Landings now in a rest home, but she told me, she's a choir member at Centenary Church, that the townspeople down that street that lived on that road got together and decided to plant the Bradford pear trees all down the road. And I would like to see the Bradford pear trees remain there, but just the town help the, with the pruning. Could that be considered District Two, right? Is that, that's your district? Do you think you could help us with just getting the Bradford pears pruned and see how that goes for a while? I'm not in favor of cutting them all down.
I'm all for continued maintenance.
I think it would hurt a lot of the elderly people that, I don't even know how that came up at choir, but she did mention that. She's in her 90s now, but she is at the Landings if you want to verify it. Eva Baker, Attorney's defense.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on this matter, please come forward this time. Not seeing anyone else.
Mayor, I move we close the public hearing.
Motion and a second to close the public hearing. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. It's the pleasure of the council.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve zoning text amendment ZA2305. Finally, amendment consistent with Towne Smithfield Conference of Product Management Plan and other adopted plans, and that the amendment is reasonable and in the public's interest.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the amendment. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Stephen.
Thank you.
Okay, now we'll move on to citizens' comments. If there's anyone wishing to speak during citizens' comments, I'll ask that you come forward, state your name and address for the record, and I'll ask that you hold your comments to three minutes.
Hi, my name is Judd Patterson. My address is 418 Westerman Place in Smithfield. I'm the co-owner of the Oak City Collection. I see a lot of familiar faces. I saw you the other day at the farmer's market, and I want to say how much we appreciate y'all giving us the chance to have that and to carry it on through May. If you came, you saw what a resounding success it was. We had a great time. We had great vendors and a great attendance, and we've had almost 100% positive feedback. We have had a few comments that we would like to, that we will probably address, one being maybe some hand washing stations at the petting zoo. If we continue to have the petting zoo, we will figure that out. And restrooms, we intend on having some signs that will direct people to some of the businesses that have agreed to let the public use their bathrooms during the event. And one other comment was the possibility of having a food truck or two there. We really don't want to do that because we have restaurants that are open on Saturday, but our signage would point people to the restaurants so that there's food available to, you know, to all the attendees and to the vendors should they want that. Otherwise, I think you'll all agree that it was a resounding success, and we would like to continue. Given that the next meeting would put us right at the edge of the next, you know, if we continued it on through the summer, we'd like to ask that you approve us to continue it on through the summer, and that's my request. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Okay. Anyone else wishing to speak?
At the February Town Hall meeting, I mentioned J.D. Lewis's book. Under the New Bern District militia, the Johnston County Regiment of William Bryan, Needham Bryan, John Smith Jr., and Samuel Smith Jr. were present at the battle at Morris Creek Bridge in 1776 near present-day Wilmington. The last battle noted in the book where Brigadier General William Bryan served in that role was at the battle at Briar Creek, Georgia in 1779. All of these men remained until the end of the war in 1783. Let it be known that at least two Johnstonians of African descent were soldiers in the Revolutionary War, being Archibald Artis and Holiday Hefcock, and confirmed with Todd Johnson at the Heritage Center. Whereas Johnston was carved out of Craven, and Craven was carved out of Johnston, Smithfield, to quote Lassiter, did receive some consideration on more than one occasion prior to the choosing of a Wake County site that resulted in the creation of Raleigh as the capital of North Carolina, page 31. Johnston County, 1746 through 1996, written by Thomas Lassiter and Wingit Lassiter. This book may be ordered online. It is recommended at J.D. Lewis's Carolina website under Johnston County Books. And Mr. Lassiter is here today. If you'd like to stand up, he's at the media table. Thank you for all you have done for the county and your father. Our town's Colonel Needham Bryan introduced a bill in the Colonial Assembly to establish the town of Smithfield while he was a member in 1762 and 1771. Please refer to J.D. Lewis's website, which is www.carolana.com, spelled C-A-R-O-L-A-N-A.com, and forward slash Revolution Patriot Leaders NC Needham Bryan. Also, Smithfield was named for Major John Smith Jr. Despite, the site is spelled Carolina due to our state's history. King Charles I of England chose the name Carolina for the new colony to be established in 1629. The name was changed to Carolina by King Charles II. The names North Carolina and South Carolina were in use by the 1680s, according to Lewis's research. This Saturday will be the coronation of King Charles III of England at 5:00 a.m. Eastern Time. No one I previously asked wanted to place a historical marker for these patriots in Smithfield and Johnston County, so I'm requesting that the town of Smithfield, the county seat, please do so. The last ranks that I found in the book for these Johnston County men were Brigadier General William Bryan, Major John Smith Jr., Major Samuel Smith Jr., and Colonel Needham Bryan. I hope that the town council will please place a historical marker for these patriot leaders wherever you choose within Smithfield ahead of our 250th anniversary in 2027, and please do so. I would greatly appreciate it. Thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Temple. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Good evening, other members of the Smithfield Town Council. My name is Alan Hall. Address is 129 Castello Way in Clayton. I stand before you tonight to speak about an issue that is deeply concerning to me. It's about discrimination and hostility towards equality in members of the LGBTQIA+ community at this recent Smithfield farmer's market. Smithfield has a long and complicated history with racism and inequality. For years, right down the road here, as a welcome to clan country sign greeted visitors at the entrance of our town, perpetuating an atmosphere of hate and exclusion. We have made a lot of progress in recent years, but events that occurred on the farmer's market on April 29th remind us that we all have a lot left to do. I attended the market with my family, and I was excited to support local vendors, and I enjoyed the day in the community. Before going further, I want to mention that we did have a great time. It was a great event with the vendors that we met. We loved, we love spending our money locally. We've shopped at a lot of stores here in Smithfield. However, in speaking to several vendors while I was there that I met and known, I was shocked to discover that one of the event organizers had sent a message to vendors that explicitly stated that equality was a controversial topic and that should be avoided. Many others and I attempted to express concerns to the organizers, and we were met with hostility and threats of legal action. I was personally accused of stalking and harassment despite having no prior contact with these individuals. This kind of behavior is unacceptable from someone who's organizing an event that is supposed to be sponsored by the town of Smithfield. Now, some of the feedback that myself and others presented that was met with anger and hostility included suggestions for porta-potties, clear written contracts, safety of vendor tents with sandbags and fire extinguishers, provided hand sanitizers after petting and feeding farm animals, having more of a focus on local artisans, handcrafted goods, local produce and meats, and not MLM companies. Those put into a position where they are organizing an event that Smithfield sponsors must listen to constructive criticism and engage in meaningful dialogue, even when it may be uncomfortable for them or challenging. They must be willing to learn and grow, acknowledge any mistakes, and work towards a better farmer's market, which is a massive benefit to this town. I do want to make sure, make that note. I think it is a huge, huge benefit to this town. However, we cannot allow discrimination to fester and grow in our town as it has in the past, and it's imperative that all members of our community feel safe and included regardless of their race, gender, religion, or sexual orientation. We must not tolerate any discrimination of any kind. We must be willing to act when it occurs, and those that do certainly should not be threatened with legal action. It is time for us as members of the community of Smithfield to stand and say unequivocally that all are welcome here in Smithfield. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Three minutes exactly, sir. Perfect. All right. Anyone else wishing to speak? If you will, please state your name and address for the record.
He's a mess. My name is Erica Hall. I also live at 129 Castello Way, Clayton, North Carolina, and I love Smithfield, and I shop here. My child goes to school here at Innovation Academy, so I have a very vested interest. But, so I'm a representative of Down Home, North Carolina. So, Down Home, North Carolina is a community group with an office here in downtown Smithfield. Our goal is to raise the voice of people in Johnston County and, you know, Smithfield, all towns of Johnston County. I'm actually here to make everyone aware. I'm here to invite you to our event, town council members, which is being held at Smith Collins Park, which is at 909 East Lee Street. The event will be held from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. on Thursday, May 11th. It is a fun, family-friendly, community event. There will be games, food, and information about our public launch of our member-led issues campaign. So, when I say member-led, that means community members, business owners that are part of our chapter. So, these are people here in Johnston County, so it's member-led. It's not anybody from any other county. It's Johnston County. So, our issue campaign is teachers do their best when you supply success. You can learn and hear about our chapter members, of how we chose to select this specific demand, and how we can advocate for Johnston County's largest employer, which is Johnston County Public Schools. We have had a personal meeting with our county commissioners lately, and we would like to start a personal relationship with each and every one of you and see how we can uplift Smithfield as a town and how we can do well with Johnston County. And I have some flyers here if you would like this information, so I hope you can join us to make Johnston County and Smithfield a better place to work, a better place to live, and a better place to be. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, if you want to leave your flyers up, you can just give them to the clerk if you would like. Anyone else wishing to speak? If you will, please state your name and address for the record, sir.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. My name is John Balot. I own the Twisted Willow, 119 South Third Street in Smithfield. My name is John Balot. My wife and I own the Twisted Willow. In collaboration with Oak City Collection, we received approval for and coordinated and sponsored the farmer's market held on the 100th block of South Third Street this past Saturday. Having only about two and a half weeks to amass all the vendors, petting zoo, and music for the first event, my wife especially had many sleepless nights trying to coordinate everything and be sure that we put together a product and event that would draw a large group of people and have something for everyone. We thought best, as we were trying to put a product out that would draw the masses of people, to not have items that may trigger or potentially cause controversy at the first few events, and attempt to, again, draw a large number of people, offer something for everyone, and bring the people to our downtown to help support our local businesses, and hopefully get the approval to continue the market throughout the summer, growing it and making it bigger and better. Each time, I would like to point out, not one vendor was turned away due to their political affiliation, race, religion, sexual orientation, or identification. We did ask that not one person display item for sale that reflected these potential point biases. I would like to thank Sloane Stevens and David Barber for coming down and offering your support and speaking with me about the event. I would also like to thank you, Mr. Mayor, and Michael Scott for taking the time out of your schedule to come down and speak with some of our vendors and see it for firsthand. In regards to Mr. Hall's statement, I would like to point out that prior to the first farmer's market, he had zero communication with myself, my wife, or anyone involved with the planning of this market. He has taken this stand, he is now taking, relaying to you today based off of second-hand, one-sided information he somehow received and is now making this apologetic stand against something he has no direct knowledge of or any base of actual fact. I am sure his antics that he's been pulling are not news to all of you from his harassment of Johnston County School Board member Michelle Antoine and her family, so relentless and inappropriate that her family, including her children, now have a protection order against him. And he and his cohorts, and he and his cohorts are now stalking my wife on social media and posting slanderous rants anywhere they can to boycott our store. What you may or may not know is that Mr. Hall is a convicted felon on probation. He is also a Satan worshipper trying to get satanic literature and satanic.
John, let's, can we just keep this? I'm sorry, I'll stop your comments, but your time, but can we not do the personal attacks, please?
I wish I could, and I'll try to take that out of it.
If it's specific to the farmer's market, I mean, you have a right to speak, right? And that's your prerogative, right? I can't control you for what you say. I just, I would ask that you please try to limit your comments to the personal, you know, not having personal attacks if you can, please, sir. And I'll let you continue.
Can I speak about the harassment? It's not a personal attack. It's basically stating fact. The harassment has been so relentless over the past few days that my wife has not slept and is too fearful to go to the store by herself. So, at this point, I would like to go on the public record in front of you all here today and on recording that the harassment will not be tolerated, and we will be seeking legal counsel. And I would also like to say that Mr. Allen Hall, Mrs. Erica Hall, and Christine Livingston, who I do not see in the audience today, will not be permitted through my doors for the harassment that they are doing with my wife. So, again, I would like to thank you all that came to the market. I believe it went very well with the little time that we had to prepare for, and I hope we can continue throughout the summer. We will just make it bigger and better.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak during citizens' comments? All right. Thank you very much. We'll now move on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended?
I'll make a motion. We approve this consent agenda as amended.
Motion and a second, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see. Move on to, one business item was removed. We can now go into budget discussions. If we'd like to start talking about that now, or do you like to take a?
Should we do?
How would you guys?
I would appreciate it if you could take just a few minutes so I can gather my things, discuss budgets still.
Or we could move through the council members' comments and the manager's report, and then come back to that. Is that appropriate with you, sir?
Yes.
All right. So why don't we move now to council members' comments? Anybody wishing to speak?
Mr. Mayor, I just would say that I did attend the event Saturday. I thought it went very well for the first event. I mean, most of the comments were good. I did have some comments of things they thought could be done better in the future, but that was not negative comments, it's something new. I thought it was good. I would like to see more produce in the Farmer's Market, but the one lady that was there that was selling produce says she had a great day, and so she would definitely be back. So that was good, but I thought it was, I talked to almost every single vendor that was there, and like I said, for the most part, we had all very positive comments. I appreciate the hard work that you guys did. I had, there was great comments about how smooth it went getting stuff in there for everybody, and that was really great. So I do appreciate it, appreciate the work you guys are doing and look forward to it continuing.
Add on to Councilman Barber, I too enjoyed it. Appreciate you guys doing it, stepping up for our community and putting something together that has obviously been a need for our community. Go back to our Parks Rec Plan, it was one of the number one things asked for. I would like us to have some more discussion on it, maybe at the June meeting. I know that doesn't fit y'all's schedule perfectly, but I would like to get it on the agenda for it to be discussed in more of a business format, if that is possible, Mr. Moore, for next month, about the continuation of it, because I do think everybody supports it. But given the role we play here, you know, I think we need to make sure we keep our arms around it and continue to support you guys in any way we can.
Any other?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have a few. I'd definitely like to thank everybody who came out a few weeks ago to the litter suite that we had throughout the town of Smithfield. Definitely like to go on record, and definitely thank the Johnson County public help. They probably sent over about 60 or 70 volunteers over to East Smithfield and just did a great job of, you know, picking up debris and whatever, so I just wanted to definitely thank them. Also, this past weekend, we did have the ribbon cutting for the walking trail over at Smith Collins Park and also the splash pad. So I'd definitely like to thank everybody who came out. It was a good surprise to see Councilman Wood show up, good to see him back tonight. So that was definitely great. I've been talking to a few residents over in Pine Acres, and I guess this question's going to almost go to Bob, but what's the status on our RV park? Some of those residents have been kind of asking me, and I don't know what to tell them. If you know anything, or the manager?
I can tell you that the entire project is held up due to sewer allocation. They do not have sewer allocation at that spot, so they will not be able to get certificates of occupancy or open up until the sewer plan is done at the county. That's a year away. Now, they could sell the property. I've heard different stories about possibly the property being available for purchase for another type of construction project, but I don't know any more about that than that.
All right. Lastly, this is probably going to be a follow-up every month, but I know I did speak some of the shootings that was down in East Smithfield. I personally noticed myself more patrols over there, so that is, that's definitely a start. I also did mention last meeting, and I'm in preparation of just possibly trying to find a spot, hopefully Mr. Johnson and Mr. Manager, that we could possibly get into Serriar Community Center. Don't seem like there's that many chairs in there, but start holding our monthly meetings. We did have an East Smithfield Improvement Organization before COVID that we met, a lot of times at the different churches, but, and kind of talking to some residents, it would be great that if we could just take it out of the churches and just have a central location that we possibly could meet. I know in the summertime, it's open from like 12 to 5, so possibly about 6, 6:30. I mean, I'm just kind of throwing this out, but just hopefully, you know, we'll be able to have a centralized location that the residents can come, and we can invite some of the department heads, and they can come over, basically how we used to do it anyway. So just kind of wanted to throw that out. I know we did have a proclamation tonight, you know, dealing with national gun violence awareness, so I just hope we can do more in the prevention stages and, you know, and I think the police presence is number one. It's, hopefully, it'll be a deterrent, and hopefully the folks that are not from here, you know, will stay away. So I'd definitely like to appreciate you with that. But this will be something said and mentioned pretty much every meeting, because definitely don't want it to go away, and as it get warm, warmer, and the days get a little longer, we know how people sometimes can definitely act. So I just wanted to put that out for tonight. Thank you.
Forgot one thing.
Yes, sir.
The Ham and Yam Festival this weekend, hope for everybody out there. Been a lot of planning going on, thanks to Sarah and her planning committee, and just remind everybody, what year is it, Sarah?
Thirty-seventh.
Thirty-seventh year of it. And just wanted to make a note for the record that Smithfield, Virginia, has never yet attended to compete in our Ham and Yam competition. So we- Yep. So we'd like to say that Smithfield, North Carolina, has the number one country ham in the world.
And real quick, Mr. Mayor, on top of that, I mean, even dealing with that, I know I may mention to the mayor, I might have mentioned it to the town manager, but last year's Ham and Yam Festival, it wasn't a good look, with all the political rhetoric that was going on on some of the streets and whatever. I know some of those elections have passed by, but I just hope, you know, we can really celebrate what the Ham and Yam Festival is all about, instead of all the political rhetoric that was, especially behind the courthouse and stuff, because that could have turned ugly last year. So hopefully, you know, all that stuff will be gone away. Of course, it's not going to never go away, but I just think we should be able to celebrate Smithfield and what really the Ham and Yam is all about, and just kind of leave some of the other stuff. This is not the place for it, especially with all the visitors and all the kids and everything. It's not a good fit.
It is glad, I am glad to be back. Yeah, I appreciate it. I have been out for multiple weeks, several weeks, due to some medical procedures and issues, but I just wanted to thank everybody in the room that contacted me or my family during that. It meant a lot to me and my family for you to take time out to check on us and offer to bring food and whatever. We did, I definitely tested my wife's patience with me during this procedure, but she, for better for worse, for sure, right now during this. So she wanted me to express her appreciation to everybody in this room that did reach out, and I appreciate all your patience. And Mike, Mr. Manager, sending me updates, and the mayor constantly in contact with updates, and on the budget session. Unfortunately, I haven't been to a budget meeting until tonight, so, but they've been keeping me updated, so I do appreciate it. And last but definitely not least, a big kudos to our town clerk. I'm not only thankful I work with her, but more proud she's a friend of mine of my family's, and she means the world to us, and she takes care of this misfit group of guys like none other. So she's the best, and if you've ever dealt with her, you know why. So, you know, congratulate her when you see her, and tell her thank you for all of her hard work, because without her, none of this would happen. So, thank you.
Mayor, I promise this is the last one, but as I look in the audience, I just want to welcome a new resident from Wake County to Johnston County. She just moved to East Smithfield, Massey Street, Miss Felicia Baxter. She moved here last Friday, is already attending a meeting, and I know people been here living 30, 40, 50 years and haven't attended a meeting yet. So I had a chance to meet her. She wants to get involved with the town, and so I just want to welcome her to Smithfield, Johnston County.
Always good to see new residents, it's so welcome. Thank you, Councilman Lee. Anyone else? So again, I just want to echo some of the things that some of the council members have already said. The Farmer's Market, I think, was, I can say that I was very, very pleased with the event. I was very, you know, I didn't know what to expect, right? So going out there and seeing all the vendors and all the people in downtown Smithfield, I was concerned about parking. The council was concerned about parking. I think it worked, right? You know, are there some things that you maybe need to work on? Absolutely, you know, right? And many of those things have already been voiced, but it was great to see people that I didn't know, right, in downtown Smithfield, and then to go into Gilded Pear, and they were in there drinking coffee and eating and so forth, and I saw them going into the, you know, Oak City and to Twisted Willow as well, as far as, you know, just the activity and, you know, all the other, the businesses. I walked past the diner, because I parked at Town Hall to walk down here, so I would assume that, you know, they were busy as well, as well as the other, you know, the businesses. Sorry, I don't name all the businesses, right? But it was just exciting to see that. So as the mayor, I'm the, you know, I can't do a lot. I can't vote, can't do anything, but I can be the cheerleader for the town of Smithfield, and I can honestly say I want to do what is right, and this council wants to do what's right for the town of Smithfield, for our citizens, to make it better for all, right? To make Smithfield the very best place, as you mentioned earlier, to live, to work, to play, and to stay, right? And that's what it's all about. And I can, I mean, I was blown away, right? I mean, Saturday, as Councilman Lee mentioned, we had the ribbon cutting at the new walking trail at Smith Collins Park, as well as the addition to our splash pad. And let me tell you, there's so many good things going on in this town right now, and they don't happen overnight, right? What we do today may not come to fruition until three, four, five years from now, but we're planning for 20 to 40 years, right? Used to, when I was coming up and going through school, we were taught that we should plan 20 years out, and Stephen, you probably know this, right? We were taught to plan for 20 years out. Now it's 40 years out, right? That's how quickly and how fast we are growing as a community. North Carolina, Johnston County, being one of the fastest-growing in the nation, we're right there. We're part of it, and I'm proud of what this council is doing to put the things in place. Had an opportunity recently to tour our new water department, the addition to our water treatment plant, and the ribbon cutting for that will be Thursday, the 4th. So I encourage everyone to attend that, as well as the council if you can, but it's exciting to see what we're putting into place. People say, "Oh, you don't need any water." Well, I'm not planning for next week. I'm planning for 40 years, or we're not. We're planning for 40 years, right? And I hope that we're in a better place than what we found ourselves with the sewer and so forth around it, you know, right now that we're having to deal with. You just mentioned that development can't open because of sewer allocation, right? So that's what we're doing, right? And it sounds like a lot of money now, but just think of what it may be 20 to 30 years from now. But if you haven't been to Smith Collins Park and to the walking trail, I'm really, really excited about that. The pond, it could be a huge asset. I'm just, I'm thrilled about it. We're going to hopefully try to get it, the pond stocked with fish, and hopefully that will come to fruition. There are long ways to go there. I'm not saying it's going to happen, but there's so many things that could go on in that area, as well as had the opportunity to visit the police department and tour that, and much, much-needed space I saw that we needed at the police department. So that's come along very nicely. It's looking good, and just, again, another one of the pieces of the puzzle that this council is doing with. And then, if you haven't been by where the community garden is and the rehabilitation there of Spring Branch, that is Spring Branch, correct? I encourage you to go by and see what's going on there. So I went by today and took a look at the progress that's being made there, and it's looking really good, so hopefully that will have a tremendous impact on the flooding and the ability to control our stormwater in that area. But again, to the citizens that are watching and the citizens that are here, you should be proud of the staff and should be proud of this council, because just ride around and look. And the last thing I'll say is Friday night, we had the opening of the amphitheater, and that's a project that's been in the works for a very long time. I remember when John Lampy was sitting right here, I had my first meeting on that with Donna Bailey Taylor and John Lampy over in his office when he was as mayor, the first pitched the idea of the amphitheater. And we were, again, things don't happen overnight, but we kept at it, and we're finally able to get the funding that was needed, thanks to our support in Raleigh, and we were able to get that funding, and not only for the amphitheater, but for many of the projects that I just mentioned. They would not have been feasible without the help of our folks in Washington and, more importantly, in Raleigh, to provide us with that funding. Now, we may have been able to do them, but we may not have been able to do them at the time and as quickly as we did. So amphitheater opening is this Friday. We'll have the ribbon cutting for that. I encourage the council to come to that. We'll have a band. Gary, gotta say it. It's, the band is Bad Decisions. I'm hoping this is not a bad decision, and I certainly do not think that it is going to play out to be a bad decision. It really, really looks nice, and hats off to your staff and to all the staff, everybody that's had a part of it. It really, really looks good down there. So thank you very much. Sorry to be long-winded, but again, that's one thing I can do, is be the cheerleader, and there's a lot to cheer about right now in the town of Smithfield. And it's not me, it's these gentlemen right here and the staff that brings it to us. Again, I don't vote on it, right? I can just try to help us get us there. So lots going on, but thanks for the comments tonight. We do hear the comments. We don't act on the comments, but it's certainly, there's certainly things that, we don't act during the meeting on the comments, but certainly we'll take the things under advisement and certainly look forward to more things to come in the town of Smithfield. So thank you all very much. With that, Mr. Manager, I will turn it over to you, and we might have a little bit of time for budget. We'll see. Go ahead, sir.
I don't have a whole lot, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. I just want to make sure people do know the times of the events that are coming up. The open house for the water plant is Thursday, May 4th, and that begins at 1:00 with the ribbon cutting and last until 3:00. You can drop in and drop out and see what that project's all about. We talked a lot about the money invested in that project, but if we went and started that project today, it would cost us at least twice as much as what it cost us just a year ago when we started this project. Really good project, you know, and really good for the town. The ribbon cutting for the amphitheater, as the mayor said, is Friday, May 5th. That's at 7:00 p.m., so then the band will follow. So it's free concert, come out, enjoy yourself, enjoy some music, take a look at the amphitheater, because it's a great gem for the town of Smithfield. Also, Councilman Lee mentioned the splash pad. We did double the size of the splash pad- We did double the size of the splash pad as part of the project over with the walking path. That is, that project is basically complete. It is scheduled to open Memorial Day weekend on May 26th. The water will be turned on and it will remain on through the summer, so come out, bring your children, and enjoy that, another project. It's a gem for the community, and that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else have anything? If not, I think for budget, if, I think, maybe if we, well, it depends on what you would like to do, but there are a lot of things that are not, that have been requested. We've gone through all the departments, you've seen those requests, but, you know, if there are any, maybe some specifics, we don't have to get into it tonight, but maybe if there are some specifics that you would at least like to give the manager some direction on, we could do that. So why don't we take, it's 8:31, why don't we take a five-minute recess, and we'll come back in here maybe for a few minutes and discuss budget? Is that agreeable?
Yeah, agreeable.
All right. We'll stand recess for five minutes. Thank you.